Record it.
Call the Wilmer City Council meeting to order for Monday, November 7th. Roll call.
Mayor Calvin.
Here.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Here.
Osmeus.
Here.
Butterfield.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Ask.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Plowman.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Please stand up for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This evening, we're fortunate to have the Troop 224, the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts from, I believe that's what you said, right Heather?
Scouts of America are Girl Troop and are Boy Troop.
The Boy Troop and Girl Troop for Scouts, Boy Scouts of America, Troop Number 224. So if leaders would like to introduce, so that the council knows who's all here, that would be great. So, and then as you introduce them, then they can just stand and we can recognize them at the end.
Could we have them just introduce themselves?
Absolutely.
So, who else, Eric Jacob, just stand up and say their name? Just go down the line.
My name is Carson.
My name is Lyon.
Me is Eva.
Me is Sarah.
My name is Gabriel.
My name is Gabriel.
My name is Holly.
My name is Griffin.
My name is Abby.
I'm Evan.
I'm Evan.
I'm Evan.
Okay, and then leaders, you guys can introduce yourselves as well.
I'm Heather.
Joel Albert.
Frankel.
Justin Seesman.
David Bottin.
Great, thank you. We are so glad that you guys are here. We understand that you're working on your government badge. And so you're free to stick around as long as you wish. Sometimes our meetings get a little boring, sometimes they get a little feisty. So if you want to stay for the feisty part, you tell me what it's going to be and then we'll have it. So anyways, we're glad you're here. We're glad you're learning about government because the Boy Scouts are a great organization. And my son and my daughter both were involved in scouting and really took it to great lengths. And I was a leader as well as my wife. So thank you guys very much and thank you for Calvary Church for sponsoring Troop 224. With that, are there any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda as it's been presented?
There is, Mr. Mayor. We need to add Hemponics under Item 7.
Okay.
Then I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to add a presentation from staff on request for licensure for Hemponics. And Kyle will take care of that when we get to that point on the agenda. All in favor of the revised agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, that motion does carry. Consent items, Ms. Thompson.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, on tonight's consent agenda, we have for council's approval, the city council minutes of October 17th, Wilmer Municipal Utilities Board minutes of October 24th, Convention and Visitor Bureau minutes of September 20th, Planning Commission minutes of September 7th, September 21, and October 5, Accounts Payable Report for October 12 through November 2nd, Approval of Two Resolutions for MinDOT Contract Number 1051871 Airport Apron Expansion AIG Portion, And To Approve Resolution for MinDOT Contract Number 1051732 for Airport Apron Expansion, Resolution for the Consideration of Deferred Special Assessments for Senior Citizens Disabled or Active Military, And Consideration of Sale of THC Product Licenses.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Motion made and seconded, Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. I would like to pull the Planning Commission Minutes from September 21st for a question.
So we have a motion and a second to approve everything with the exception of the Planning Commission Minutes for September 21st. Additional discussion? A roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmeus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. Under Item Number 5, which is Skylark Mall Rezone, the last paragraph is referencing a Columbarium Text Amendment, but there aren't any staff notes or anything attached to the minutes, and so I wasn't quite sure what that's referencing.
Ms. Valiant.
I would say that that was in error there, that that's even on there. Because that wasn't even in them, if I recall. I don't think there was even anything about the Columbarium Text Amendment. Was there something, Justice, on that, that I missed at that meeting?
No, I'm trying to check the email that I sent that has the 21st minutes attached. I reckon that's who we're talking about.
Well, if it wasn't talked about, Councilmember Nelson, maybe just simply have that portion struck from the minutes and approve the rest of it, if you're okay with the rest of it.
I'm fine with that. I was also curious if we were working on a text amendment with it, but I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with that removed.
Second. Item Number 5 removed.
No, not Item Number 5, the last paragraph.
Just the Columbarium Text Amendment portion.
It doesn't relate to the...
No.
Okay.
So just the last paragraph.
Okay, staff understands what she's asking?
Mm-hmm.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. All in favor of that... All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion does carry. Next, we have a presentation from staff in regards to Hemponics and their desire to sell THC products within the city of Wilmer.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Box.
Members of the city council. This evening, with the amendment to the agenda, we do have, staff did receive an application for a THC permit on Friday of this week. Unfortunately, it did not make the cutoff for our packet, and the packet was already sent out to you at that time. But unusual circumstance with the current applicant, there's a, if I understand correctly, there's a commercial lease that's in the balance right now, so they're asking for this to come forward at this time. So we did have, or I did have a chance to review the application that was emailed to us on Friday. The application does appear to be complete. It's, the name of the business is Hemponics LLC with a business address of 1425 First Street South in Wilmer. The applicant is in attendance. If you do have any specific questions for him, the application does look complete, from what I am seeing, but we have not had a chance to review it at this time. So if the council does consider approving this license, we would make the recommendation to approve pending all requirements and review being met. If you have any other questions, I'd be happy to take them.
I'll make a motion to approve pending staff recommendation.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for presenting this to us tonight, even if it is short order. What does this all entail? Is this just regarding edibles, or is this regarding other hemp-derived products?
This license is just for, is for THC products.
Okay.
So everything under that umbrella.
Okay, including medical?
No, no. It would not cover that. That's a different license. But if you have, if the applicant wants to tell you what he's selling, he...
Mr. Mayor, would it be appropriate to ask the business owner?
This will be similar to what you did on consent under aye.
Okay. Just looking to learn a little bit more about the business, just a brief synopsis for the, for us and the public.
Mr. Romaine.
Yeah, thanks for having me. So Hemponics is a farm up on County Road 40. It used to be called Lettuce Abound. We used to grow indoor lettuce farm, vertical aeroponic lettuce. The lettuce business is a very hard business. So in 2018, we transitioned to be a hemp farm. We're a registered hemp farm with the state of Minnesota. We were one of the first hemp farms. We've worked with the University of Minnesota to develop unique strains to prevent plants from going hot, or high THC content. Beginning of this year, we launched a consumer line using our plants that are grown up in New London. And we sell currently CBG, which is our number one cannabinoid that we sell. It's a non-psychoactive cannabinoid. We sell CBD, CBN, and also THC. THC accounts for about a quarter of our product line. It's THC derived from hemp. And we actually were one of the first hemp companies in the state to pioneer safety labels requirements before the July 1st ordinance at the state level even changed. So we've been compliant long before July 1st law changes, and we continue to pioneer child-resistant packaging. You know, no things that look like candy or cookies, because as a father of two young boys, I don't believe in those products personally. There's also a significant difference in what we are trying to build versus what, you know, competing businesses might have. We are not a tobacco store. We do not have that same vibe and aesthetic. We're not selling bongs and pipes. We're primarily selling hemp-related products in reference to medical uses, but not medicinal, as the state might call it. So it's all hemp-derived products. So our store would be located ideally on 1425 on First Street, which is right next door to Quality Appliance. It's kind of contingent on this application, so I know we're a little out of order. But as a startup with low on capital, it's scary for us to invest a lot of money into renovations, not knowing what's going to happen here. And so I'm hoping just to get kind of that contingent approval, so we can continue renovations.
Okay, if I may, one more. So I assume this is just regarding the retail aspect of it, your manufacturing, your, all of that remains in place?
Yep. So the way that the hemp industry is, is really four parts. There's the farming, there is the extraction process, the manufacturing process, and the retail. Currently, we do the farming and the retail. So we send our flour out for extraction and manufacturing and receive back our product. So what would be at that location, if you know that spot, 1425 is the old Jane Vixey office, that would be our retail space. And right behind that, in the back door, is kind of more of a warehouse e-commerce operation. We do have an e-commerce website. The other benefit for us to move to Wilmer, and why we're so excited about it, is that going through the Wilmer post office, we save two days on shipping time to our customers versus the New London post office. So a lot of benefits, and we're super excited to be here. Local company, locally grown, locally made, locally sold.
All right, thank you very much for the information.
Additional comments or questions? Councilmember O'Brien.
Your plant on Highway 40, is that where you grow your hemp?
Correct.
Okay. What kind of security do you have for that plant?
So the state comes out every quarter to check our plants, but also do security audits. We don't have any signage, for one, which is, you know, security through obfuscation. There are no visible plants or traces that it might be a hemp farm from the highway. But beyond that, you know, we have locking security doors at every entrance and exit. We got cameras, video and audio is backed up to the cloud. We don't know what the state's going to do when it comes to growing cannabis, because right now we grow, you know, industrial hemp, which is, there's not a lot of security rules around it, but we do, for our own benefit, because that's our product, we try and be extremely secure. So one of the biggest things we've done this year, in my opinion, in regards to security, is move the sale of our end consumer products off the farm, so that way we have less foot traffic out there. Once the state pushes out guidelines for how they want medicinal cannabis to be grown, we'll immediately apply to those. That's what our goal is.
All right, thank you. Additional comments or questions? Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So is this going to be your only retail area, or will you be expanding?
No, we'll be expanding. We do have a store in New London. My wife and I own two businesses on First Street in New London. So as you're coming into town, there's Milton Salon. Right next door to that is our newest business. It's a tattoo shop focused on women, paramedical, and permanent makeup tattoos. In the basement of that building, we share an alleyway with Goat Ridge is where the current location is. So this would be a second location for us. And we would move e-commerce out of New London to Wilmer.
Thank you.
Additional comments or questions? Okay, so the request is to approve the license for Hemponics pending staff review and approval. All in favor of that? Robert, is that a motion, simple motion, or is it a resolution, seeing it?
Mayor, council, that's a motion.
So motion is made and seconded, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion does carry. Thank you. And I apologize for that. I should have known that ahead of time, but this is really the first time we've actually gone through the approval. You know, with liquor, we have to have the roll call, even though it's a motion, we still have to have a roll call. So that was my confusion, so I apologize for that. I should have known that answer. Next, we have open forum. Anybody from the public that wishes to speak?
No, there's no one that signed up.
Okay, next we'll open the first public hearing, which is amending Wilmer Municipal Code, Chapter 2, establishing filing fees for municipal office. Mr. Box, our operations director, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The previous council meeting, the council set the public hearing to hear this ordinance before you this evening. Staff did present the statute, and then the range of what the ordinance or the filing fee can be set at with a maximum, for a city our size, a maximum of $40 is the filing fee that can be set. Staff was directed by council to set the filing fee at $20, and that is reflected in the ordinance before you this evening. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So this is a public hearing. Is everybody from the public that wishes to speak? Again, this is a public hearing. Anybody wishes to speak in regards to the ordinance amending Wilmer Municipal Code, Chapter 2, establishing filing fees for municipal office, changing the fee from $5 to $20? Anybody wish to speak from the public? I'll close the public portion and bring it to the council table. Council, what are your wishes?
Move to approve.
Second. Motion made and seconded, discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Osmeus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
No.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Seven ayes, one knee.
That ordinance passes. Next, we'll open the public hearing for an ordinance amending salaries for elected officials. I'll open the public hearing and call on Mr. Box, our operations director. Mr. Box.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Similar to the last agenda item, this was also introduced at the last council meeting. This is for lending or setting salaries for elected office. That is for the council and for the mayor. Attached in your packet is a clean draft ordinance to see the changes and the proposed changes in there. The mayor's salary would be set, what's being proposed, the mayor's salary is being set at $19,250 annually. Council members, $12,500 annually. And then an additional third change is the mayor pro tempore change from $500 to $750 annually. Those are the recommended changes at this time. Those, these figures are in the preliminary budget for 2023. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
And I just have one question, Mr. Box. The council has to do this before the general election. The general election is tomorrow.
Correct.
But at any time, the council can reduce their salaries, just that they cannot raise it above the amount that has been agreed upon, if this is the amount that's agreed upon by council?
Correct. Paraphrasing the statute a little bit, salaries can only be set during a general election year or take effect after a general election. And then, but like you had said, reduction can happen at any time.
Okay. And I know that the, I know the county board did this as well, as they raise their salaries, or they have it on the agenda to raise their salaries tomorrow, I think. Although they hadn't done it before, I think they've already done it. So anybody from the public who wishes to speak? Again, this is adjusting the salaries for elected officials for the city of Wilmer. Anybody that wishes to speak? Anybody that wishes to speak to the, at the public hearing in regards to amending salaries for elected officials? With that, I'll close it and bring it to the council table. Council, what are your wishes?
I'll make that motion.
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve amending salaries as presented by staff for elected officials. Motion made and seconded, discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Butterfield.
No.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmeus.
Aye.
Seven ayes, one knee.
That ordinance passes as well. Mr. Box, for your work, I know that you've worked really hard on this and put a lot of work into these two items. And we're glad that you were here to help Leslie get this done, so thank you.
Happy to help. Thanks.
Next, we have consideration of an introduction of an ordinance call for public hearing for 2022 water rate adjustments. Ms. Valiant.
Good evening, council. General Manager John Haren was unable to be at this meeting tonight to introduce this ordinance, amending water rates for effective January 1st of 2023. So we're looking to have the public hearing on Monday, November 21st at 6:30, and at that time, he will review how all the rates were established. David Berg Consulting did the rate analysis, and they came up with that there's going to be a 20% increase effective the first of this year, 5% after that in '24, and 4% in '20, excuse me, 4% in '24, and 3% in 2025, '26.
Okay. So this is simply setting the public hearing for November 21st. Council, what are your wishes?
Make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to introduce an ordinance to call for a public hearing for water rate adjustments for 2022. Discussion. Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wondering, because I believe that we have discussed this before, but it was some time back. Wondering at the public hearing if John or another representative of the utilities is going to be here to discuss it more in depth.
Yes, Mr. Haren will be here the night of the public hearing.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you.
And again, this is less than what they originally proposed because of the internal financing versus funding? Additional questions or comments? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion does carry. Next, we have a request to support the Highway 23 Coalition Corridors of Commerce funding request. Ms. Valiant.
Yes. Tonight, we have Jeff Bertram, president of the Highway 23 Coalition, and he'd like to speak to you about this funding request.
Mr. Bertram.
And, Councilors, Leslie, staff, Jeff Bertram, acting chair of the Highway 23 Coalition. I brought my son with Jacob, who likes politics and government, so he rode along, who, by the way, he's also an Eagle Scout. So for those of you who want to become an Eagle Scout, there's some hope. So I'm here, during my real job during the day. I worked for West Central Sanitation, Don Williamson, for coming up to 25 years. So I know some of you and appreciate your time tonight. And I also appreciate the Highway 23 membership. You've been a member since the very beginning. There's 12, our members include 15 cities, 12 counties, nine nonprofits, and 60, over 60 businesses. It's the greatest committee I've ever served on with a great cross-section of public and private entities. And as you know, we've been working for years, and currently, the four-lane highway that is being constructed between Painsville and Richmond, and also next spring, between Painsville and New London, are part of our efforts and what we've done. We've identified several projects along the corridor. Our goal is to go four lanes, border to border. And so we've got multiple projects along the corridor, and we are going, we've stepped up our efforts on applying for grants that exist within state and federal granting opportunities. What I'm asking for tonight, the resolution that you see in front of you, is a specific project on Highway 23, 2.5 miles that are graded and are ready to be paved and turned into a four-lane highway. We're going to be applying funding for that. This resolution does not ask for any money or any commitment for money. It's part of the corridors for commerce program, and their process, the city, the state of Minnesota would take the lead, as well as January County. January County approved the resolution last Tuesday at their meeting. The city of Wilmer did that night. And we're also asking that part of the requirement and what helps get the funding requests is that there's local recognition of, knowledge of the project. So that's pretty much the straight-up request, and we'd appreciate your support of the resolution for that funding request. If there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Mr. Bertram, thank you for your detailed report. We are appreciative. And as you know, Councilor Nelson, myself, and Ms. Valiant all have made trips out to Washington to lobby for this money as well. And a number of members of the council also have attended meetings that... And a number of members of the council also have attended meetings that you guys have put on locally here. So I just want to thank you guys for the work that you do. I do agree with you. We do need that four lane, and I'm working hard on Mayor Larson and also the mayor of Sioux Falls to get them to sign on as well. They don't really have a horse in the game, so to speak, but it really means a lot when the anchors do go on record of saying that we do support this, and this is a good thing. I have one last comment that I'll make after, see if council wants to make any comments. But I would imagine that we would have supported that, but I'll listen for a motion in a second for that.
I would make a motion to adopt a resolution supporting pursuit of corridors of commerce funding for the four-lane conversion of Highway 23.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Additional discussion. Councilmember O'Brien.
Many years ago, when I was on the school board in New London, we were trying to get that Highway 23 and Number 9 intersection. We had all kinds of issues back then. That was many years ago. We couldn't get the number of warrants that was needed. We know the warrants are there now. There's been a lot of discussion about that. Do you have anything to do with that at all? Any input?
Mayor Kelvin, Councilor O'Brien, what the coalition overall has tried to do is not necessarily get into specific designs or specific projects where we try to hit the funding. MnDOT did not have the four-lane highway, for example, between Painsville and Kimball and New London and Painsville on their radar, so to speak, as far as getting done. It was on their radar, but the coalition, quite frankly, and Kelly Morell specifically, got the funding. And once we hit the funding, they're building it. And so, but on the New London situation, we did feel that it was important that we did weigh in because MnDOT backed off of their J-turn proposal, went back, came up with four proposals, and now they narrowed those four to two, and they're looking for some direction. I encouraged the Canoye County Board to weigh in. Certainly, I think it would be appropriate for the Wilmer City Council, because again, it affects the corridor. But the public input period is right now. But it's, there's a roundabout that they're recommending or a modified interchange. And we went on record at our last board meeting, not this meeting, the October meeting, and we supported the modified interchange. Because we just don't believe the whole point of this, of the corridor, is to increase safe speeds throughout the corridor. And to put a roundabout there, we didn't think would be appropriate. And so we did go on record saying that we would support a modified interchange, which basically will line up with County 9 and will kind of be like a half loop off and a half loop in. And so the traffic still will continue to flow, but it would be, it wouldn't be slowing it down to a roundabout speed level. So we did, I did sign that letter, submitted to John Hughesby, and they accepted that. And the public comment is open. And again, either individually or as a city, I'd recommend that the council, to some degree, weigh in on that as well.
Thank you.
Additional questions or comments to question? Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I remember back to 2014 when I first started. And shortly thereafter, the mayor had just started as well. We had the opportunity to go up to the state capitol. And I just wanted to recognize everybody on the coalition and the coalition, as well as our elected officials, also Member Baker and Senator Lang, and the many, many, many meetings that were put together, even with the transportation commissioner at the time and others. And the hard work and the heavy lifting that's been done in the years and years and years. It seems like that time went by in the blink of an eye, but it's so fulfilling to be able to actually get on that highway and drive it and see all the heavy construction that's been taking place. And I think all that's left is to just finish it off safely. But it's certainly going to aid in not only the flow of traffic, but larger, creating these corridors of commerce, which are a big thing to heavy industry. And we're seeing the fruits of that already in the Wilmer area community and greater. So appreciative of all your work and everybody's heavy lifting that's gone into this fairly large-scale project. So thank you.
Well, thank you, Councilor Plowman. It is kind of humbling to see the project actually happen. I live in Painsville, and so I see it firsthand every day. And we update our website on what's going on. The four lane, as you know, if you haven't driven that way, the detour is now off for the winter, and so it's opened up. And a lot of us who are getting sick of driving towards St. Martin are happy that that's over with until the spring. It'll come back. But when we had the groundbreaking at Roscoe, some of you were there. And one of the, I was on the planning commission, or planning committee with the MnDOT for that ribbon cutting or the groundbreaking. And I suggested that we have an older person and a younger person that lived along the highway or whatever. We identified my wife's aunt, Val, who lives in New London, foster. She's 96. She grew up on a farm east of Roscoe and lived in a house right across from the roadside tavern that was removed for the project. And she drove Highway 23 when it was a gravel road. And then we had a baby, a baby Brown there, that will grow up never knowing that it wasn't anything but a four-lane highway. And that is kind of humbling to know that a lot of us were a part of something like that. And when that four lane is going to be from St. Cloud to Wilmer, trust me, and as you mentioned, Councilor, it is going to be noticeable. It is going to help out Wilmer, St. Cloud, the regional. And then, of course, again, our efforts aren't done. We're going to, I don't think, unless I really live to be 572, I don't think we'll see it border to border in my lifetime. But we're going to start, and we have started the seeds for that to happen. And this is part of it. All of us, by the way, that serve in the board or volunteer, none of us get paid. I did have the pleasure of joining Mayor Kelvin and Councilor Nelson at the Washington AC. I did not go with when Leslie went with, because I don't know if we all would have went. Something probably would have happened that would have been too much for them to fund. We would have got too much money, probably. But, so we did break it up. But I did go, and we did have an impact. And had Congressman Peterson not allowed for the bypass in Painsville originally, and then now these other two forces with the $105 million, had that not all happened, we wouldn't be having these discussions today. So we're going to keep backing away at this, and this 2.5 miles on Long 23 is part of that process.
Additional comments or questions? We have a motion that's been made and seconded, and I'll save my comments till afterwards because I'm anticipating that probably Councilmember O'Brien may be offering a second motion, but I'm not sure. So I'll save my comments till then. All in favor of the motion to support the resolution, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion does carry. Thank you. So I just want to, Mr. Bertram, I just want to express my displeasure of the decision of MnDOT to pull back from the J-turn. The J-turn was the right solution. Right out here, we know that it works. This was the second one that was ever built in the state of Minnesota. The first one was built in St. Peter, if you remember. I remember sitting in staff meetings, and I remember Mel Odens saying, "I don't know if this is going to work, but if it works, it's going to be a miracle." We were killing two to three people a year at that intersection, if you recall. We have not had a major loss of life or major injury since then. And that the citizens of New London did not listen to the professionals at the DOT and the science behind it is really disheartening, simply because this is going to cost us way, way, way more money than it needs to. And where these J-turns work, they work very, very well. And I have driven the state of Minnesota. They're all over now. It's not just, they're on four lanes. They're on two lanes. You can take a look at the one up in St. Cloud, because that's the one that everybody's complaining about. But, you know, I drove that twice this last weekend. You know, maybe it's not perfect. It's not as good as this one. I'll agree with that, but it is working. So, you know, if a council member were wanting to say that we should support that interchange, that certainly is a better option than slowing all the traffic down. So I don't know if anybody wants to make a motion to support that interchange, but certainly is a heck of a lot better than a roundabout.
And Mayor Kelvin, again, we did not weigh in on that whole G-turn discussion or anything. That just kind of unfolded at the time, and we did not have a position in that whole discussion. I think MnDOT realizes, and I'm not sure what happened. I was a part of all the four-lane discussions along Richmond, Coal Springs, Rockville. I was at every one of those public meetings when those were done. And they did great public hearings, meetings. They took public input. But I think something must have went awry, and the public either wasn't listening or didn't pay attention. I'm not sure what. But now that the reality is that the four options, the J-turn being one of them, are off, two of them are off the table. Now it's coming down to these two, and to help them make sure that they do make the right decision, that's why we weighed in on the modified interchange.
Right. Yeah, it was political pressure is all it was. I mean, it was a pressure from the public, is what it was, so.
And I think the St. Cloud...
And I attended those meetings too. I was at every one of the meetings that they had. In regards to it, I was at every one of the meetings. I was in New London. And I think no other council members were there as well. Anybody want to make a motion to support that? Go ahead, council member.
I'd make a motion to notify the Department of Transportation that we support the modified interchange at the intersection in New London.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Councilmember Nelson.
Just a question. Is that survey still open? I did participate in it, but I wasn't sure if it... Are they still taking, I mean, you can go through and look at them and analyze them. And if we're, you know, if we're interested in that, I would encourage council members to check that out and to look at those options that were presented.
My understanding, Mayor Kelvin, Councilor Nelson, is it is open, but they certainly are taking public input. I think the survey is still open, but if the survey isn't open, they are seeking and taking public comment.
It's a new one than the one, what was it, a month ago?
Yeah, no, it's been recent, I think, with that. It was after they did the, I mean, they had come back with different options than the J-turn, so.
Councilmember Ask.
Do you know when the period for public comment ends?
I don't. I don't have that with me. It's not long. I mean, I would definitely get the letter in.
Fairly quick.
Yeah, I'd get the letter in and let them know that. And John Hughesby is who you'd want to send that to, Leslie.
Our staff will get that taken care of. Motion made and seconded. Additional discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Two airs for the night. Three airs, I think I get to go home. The MnDOT resolution required a roll call, so I'll go back to the MnDOT resolution, the one we did before this. So, roll call.
Councilmember O'Brien. Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Vagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes.
Thank you, Mr. Kelvin. I might say the people that the council liked it so much, they passed it twice.
There you go. There you go. Right, right. We passed it once, and then we did the roll call. So we only passed it once. Next, we have consideration of approval of deferred forgivable loan agreement to the city of Wilmer and Canoye County HRA. Ms. Bengston.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Just a little background. In 2019, the city of Wilmer was awarded $1 million through the Department of Employment and Economic Development, Small Cities Development Program, of which $600,000 is earmarked for the Lakeview Apartments. So as was described in the application to deed, the funding for Lakeview would be a five-year, 0% interest, 0-interest deferred forgivable loan between the city and the HRA. As long as the HRA continues to own Lakeview during the five-year term and at least 51% of the units remain affordable for households at or below 80% median income, then the loan is forgiven at the end of the term. So tonight, we're asking for your approval to execute that loan. When we get to, the HRA is currently working with Minnesota Housing on closing on another loan for part of the project. So when we get to that closing, we would then execute this loan. The HRA has completed its bidding process. We will be replacing all the windows, the exterior doors, the AC grills, asbestos abatement, and putting a new protective coating on the entire exterior of the building. Total cost is $3.7 million. Any editing that Minnesota Housing attorneys will be reviewing this loan along with their loans and any other funding. So there is a possibility that there's some slight editing to the wording in the document. Otherwise, but the terms of the loan will stay the same, five years, 0% interest. So with that, looking forward to taking any questions.
Council, what are your wishes?
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a five-year deferred forgivable loan to the Canoye County HRA funded from the 2019 Small Cities Development Program.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Jill, I know you worked really hard on this one. This has been a lot of work. I'm not sure how many times you've had me come in and sign papers and do this and that and the other thing, trying to get this all put together. So thank you for your diligence and thank you for the hard work that you put in and your tenacity to make sure everything's right. So I really do appreciate that. Motion made, seconded. Roll call.
Councilmember Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Vagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Thank you for your work.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Next, we have consideration of approval of a job description for Director of Community Growth. Ms. Valiant.
Good evening again, council. So we have been approached by Blue Cross Blue Shield to help staff at the position of Director of Community Growth, which would have a very high emphasis on equity inclusion. The reason why Blue Cross Blue Shield has come to the city of Wilmer is because of all the work that was done during their health and wellness grant program that lasted five years here in the city of Wilmer. And they'd like to see some of those things that started with the health and wellness program continue. And they believe that with an equity inclusion person on staff, that that would continue. Now, they are going to help fund this position, to get us started in this position. And then gradually, the city would continue this funding of the person in our budget. So it'll be a jumpstart for us to, through their support. And it's a position that I believe we strongly need in the city of Wilmer. And it'll be focused to start with within the city of Wilmer. But we also hope that we're going to make inroads to all of our, to the county, to our neighboring cities and, of course, our staff for this person to establish and continue doing equity inclusion. Very heavy focus on that. And hopefully, we can, in the future, you know, we could get funding through businesses and that too if they see that this is a good program for them. So we look to put this person downtown so that they have a very public presence. And it's looking very positive to have that person downtown from the staff that I've been talking to and also others that would see that being downtown would really help this person grow too and help our community grow. And can I, may I answer any questions that you may have?
Okay, so we have in front of us the consideration of an approval of a job description of Director of Community Growth. Ms. Valiant has explained it just a little bit. So entertaining motion to approve, and then we can have discussion in regards to it.
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Regarding this position, long-term, I would hope and I would expect that there would be all kinds of benefits, but maybe some of those wouldn't be realized right off the bat. It's going to take some learning curve and whatnot, but, you know, I assume the intent would be for this to be long-term. But is the city, by accepting funding through BCBS, are we contractually obligated to continue this position for a set duration of time?
No, we are not. They are not even putting any guidelines as to what the expectations of this position is. We're putting this expectation that they're going to be heavily focused on equity and inclusion. And that's why putting them downtown will give that more of that focus. They'll have an open-door type sort of policy, and so they'll be more reachable than if we would put them in the city hall. And we want them to continually reach out to the college and work very closely with the college, even our larger businesses and that too. So we want them to be very agile and to develop programs. And it's going to take, you know, that year, year and a half, two years to develop the programs. They'll also be also heavily in the human commission. That's... They'll also be, also heavily in the Human Commission, that's the city has already established.
One more question, if I may. Just for a little broader knowledge, for those of us that don't know, what type of a background would an individual that would be seeking this position have? Where do they come from educationally or experience-wise previously?
Maybe Mr. Box would be able to handle that one more than I would. He's been that, in that position before.
There we go.
Thank you, council member. That's a great question. This is, first, I'll just say this is a fantastic opportunity that the City of Willmar has to potentially bring in a position like this. So with a position like this, you really want to find somebody who's already, ideally already working in this field, whether it's diversity, equity, and inclusion, or coordinator type of roles, these are positions that are popping up more and more frequently across the state. So this field of work is already out there with, from private companies now moving into the public sector. So those qualifications do exist, whether it's even with administration backgrounds or political science or public administration, otherwise, there's human services degrees that you can, that you can obtain as well. So the experience is going to be the biggest factor. It's going to be a large factor into this as well, bringing somebody that is able to be that people person, to go out and just to get to know the community if they're not from the area, things like that. So the experience, the education background and the work experience, people skills, that's something that will play heavily into this role.
Okay, so if I may, one final, sorry. So this is kind of a niche market or a niche avenue, so to speak, it's not necessarily healthcare, or it's not necessarily social services, or it's kind of a hybrid specialty?
Yeah. I mean, this is a unique role, right? I mean, it's wanting to build community, wanting to build our local community to be that resource, not only for internally within City Hall, but for Main Street, for other nonprofits, other government agencies, other regional businesses that we have. It's how can we be a resource to share our message on equity and inclusion? So it's, it's kind of a specialty role, but if that answers your question.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Butterfield.
So now with looking at being downtown, are we going to be renting an office space for this position?
No, we will put them at Rack Eight. We'll put them at the Rack Office, because we have office space there.
Very supportive of this, and I think Kyle just made a comment about working with city staff, and so one of the things I was thinking about is that it would be good for that person to be in City Hall for a while before they're in Rack Eight. My second part of that question, or second part of just the thought of supporting this is that, are we able, I know when Blue Cross was investing in Willmar before, we were able to leverage some of that funding and do some things. Are they open to us looking at other grant opportunities for this type of position to help subsidize this, to get us beyond five years and to do some other things? Or are we strictly committed to Blue Cross Blue Shield till they quit funding?
No, we are not committed, I mean, right, like I said in the beginning, they are not putting stipulations on this program. They just want us to kickstart this program and have, they think that, they're putting this as a high priority for the City of Willmar and see what the need is. They saw that need through that five-year grant program, and so they would like us to continue that and continue our outreach into our diverse, and start with the Equity Inclusion Director. So there's not, right now, there's no ties to Blue Cross Blue Shield except for the funding of the director position.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fagerly, followed by Councilmember Ask.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So how do you judge if this program is working?
Well, we will be having a matrix as to what kind of outreach are we seeing? What kind of outreach are they going to, will be also talking to the people that they should be, how are they gaining that inclusion? We'll be seeing it within our own staff, what kind of programs are we starting within this City Hall? And what kind of programs are we seeing out in the community? So we'll be, there'll be, the matrix won't be happening, or the, you know, it's going to take time to build that, but as they continue to build that, it'll start first in the city office. And how are we learning to be the equity inclusion? You know, equity inclusion is not just a diverse population, it's everybody, and how are we including everybody, whether, you know, what kind of race or, you know, sex are they? You know, equity inclusion can be male, female, it can be boy, girl, it can be child, it can be adult. It's not just a race, diverse factor.
I still don't understand.
That's why we're hiring somebody that's really more talented in it than I am.
Well, here it says you need to have a bachelor's degree. In what?
As Kyle alluded to, it could be political science, it could be administration, it could be, but we're looking for somebody that's probably already started these programs. So we're going to be looking for that kind of talent. We're looking for somebody that has done this probably for a business. They could have a marketing background with it also. They could have social science with it, they could have social services with it, they could have a health and wellness background with it, just as we saw with what Wendy Foley had done with her five years here with Blue Cross Blue Shield. It wasn't strictly on that, but we'll continue focusing on some of those things too.
Thanks.
Councilmember Ask, followed by Councilmember Butterfield.
Thank you. I'm excited about this. I'd be excited about this if you weren't coming with $450,000, but like, the fact that you are is just amazing. So I'm excited about this and the partnership that Blue Cross Blue Shield brings us. I think that those programs are going to come. I'm also hopeful that they don't come too quickly, and I say that because I think this person can't come with a cookie cutter agenda that's worked in other communities. There's going to be some time that they need to learn what Willmar wants and needs. And so I'm grateful that that funding exists from Blue Cross Blue Shield to allow us to be more patient, I think, to find out what it is that our community really wants. I'll say that one of the things I've been surprised about in the time that I've been on council is maybe the lack of communication from the community on certain things. You know, we're frequently hold public hearings where we're not getting a whole lot of input. I'm hoping that something like this might actually increase some of that, because that would be great. And in addition to the programming that I think will come, and I'm confident that that's going to be helpful for the community, I think it is incredibly valuable to have a person that's championing these interests involved in the high-level administration of our staff. The fact that they're going to be sitting down with you and with Mr. Box and the rest of us on council as we do strategic planning, as we set policy, that's worth the salary alone regardless of the programs, in my mind, and from what I've seen in other organizations. So I'm very excited.
Yes. I am also very excited about this, because this is kind of one of the things that, last year at the League of Minnesota Cities, it was very evident that this is something that this size of community is going to need. And I'm excited because it's starting a lot faster than what I thought we could get it done, so.
Ms. Valiant, could you speak to what other regional centers are moving in this direction?
Well, Duluth already has a Race Equity Director. I believe the City of Minneapolis also does too. Probably a community our size doesn't yet, but this is great that we're going to have this opportunity, because I hope that this also, we're going to give this person the flexibility to also reach out to our other communities within our county, because I think that it's important that we try to get those in that realm. We've started back up with the mayor admin quarterly meetings that we used to do a few years ago, they got dropped, I think, about two years ago, and, but those are starting up again, and this is the person that would be able to come and speak to that, to that group, so you'd be reaching all the city clerks that attend, all the mayors that attend, county administrator and county commissioners, so I'm excited to see this come to fruition.
Councilmember Butterfield.
I was going to piggyback off of Councilmember Fagerly's on how we're getting judges' position, and then going to ask what other cities we could follow up with to see what they're doing with it, you know, any other cities have this going on.
Well, like I said, Duluth has it and has had this position for, I'm guessing, over three, four years. I believe, you know, Minneapolis has one, St. Paul, it's, it probably isn't Director of Community Growth, it probably is listed as Inclusion and Equity Director, more than likely. We look at this Director of Community Growth to be a positive spin on the whole thing, but their focus would be on the populace, that's the idea. It'd be focused on our community, and that's why I say they could be even a marketing manager for that, because it's going to take a lot of also outreach and people in marketing know how to reach out to other people.
Councilmember Davis.
I just want to say that I'm very grateful to Blue Cross Blue Shield for seeing potential in our community and blessing us a second time by coming here with this. And when we had the goodness, we were part of what they did, and it was amazing, and they're very generous, and I think we should just be thankful.
Any comments or questions? I have a couple of questions. So we approved the job description this evening, and then at that point, does it go into staff's hands as far as filling, or when are you thinking of filling the position?
Correct.
Or?
Yes, we would, we would put this out for filling as soon as the job description is approved, and we would put it as a position that would be open until filled, so that way we can start reviewing all the applicants as they come in, and we're not waiting for a closing date, and we can start interviewing those applicants right away also.
Okay, so I think you already answered this question, but at the work session when this was brought up, there was a question as to whether or not Blue Cross Blue Shield was going to help with the interviews? Are they going to help with that?
We certainly can ask them to help with the interview. We have done that in the past, we did that, we asked the League of Minnesota Cities to help us with our informational systems coordinator interviews, and it was very helpful to have those perspectives. So I would say that we'll reach out to Blue Cross Blue Shield and ask them if they would like to do the same. They have provided us with questions already for the position, so that's also helpful to have that kind of background already.
Okay. And I'll just echo what a number of the council members have already said, you know, I think this position is a position, you know, Willmar's a community that needs this type of a position, and this is really showing that we are a leader in regional centers. I think we're probably going to be one of the first, if not the first, regional center that will have a position of this type, particularly in the city. Other cities have it, but it is not in the city, it might be in a nonprofit, it might be someplace else, but not in the city, so I think this is really a huge step forward. So thank you for your leadership, and I know Kyle worked with you a lot on this as well to make this happen, so, and I think, I think Luanne helped you as well.
Yes, oh, yes.
Three of you have worked pretty hard at this, so.
She did.
With that, a motion's been made and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye. Name.
The motion passes. Next, Wesley, thank you for your hard work on this. I know you've done a lot of heavy lifting, and it's surprising how fast this has moved through the process. So I know when you first brought this to me was not that long ago, and to see you just see it to this end, I do appreciate it, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, we have consider a memorandum of understanding with the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency for monitoring. All that good stuff.
Pern polyfluoroalkyl substances.
Got that.
PFOS.
Is that my third time though, now that we get to leave?
Yes. The MOU to our NPDES, our wastewater permit that we have from the state, to start sampling our wastewater influent for these PFOS chemicals. I'm going to ask you what questions you have, because I don't know how much you want to know about PFOS tonight.
I know how much I want to know, but I'm not sure if the council wants to know more than I do or not, but I know when this was originally sent to me and I read through it, and I went, holy crap, I need to know something about this, and so I read through it a second time, and then I read through it a third time, and then I called Leslie and I said, what should I do with this? And she said, send it to me and I'll see if I can understand it. And then she said, we'll send it to Sarah and see what she says. So I think you understand it, and that's why we have staff. So, but this is just a memorandum of understanding between the Pollution Control Agency for monitoring of stuff that we have to monitor.
Correct. And it is our preference, our collectively, as a lot of the greater Minnesota cities, to have this in an MOU, not in our permit. So there's a specific end date to the MOU and this agreement for sampling, because we don't know much yet, so we don't know what is good to end up in our permit permanently.
Questions or comments from the council?
Motion to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Motion made in second, a discussion. Councilmember Nelson, followed by Paulman.
Thank you. I had the privilege of studying this when I was working with the coalition with that, but is this, we're not the only city doing this, correct? This is collective, kind of, we're working to try to gain some additional information both ways, correct?
Yes, so the Pollution Control Agency identified 91 wastewater treatment plants throughout the state, and then a number of large industries and some landfills and some other sectors to start monitoring this over the next, monitoring will start in 2023, two samples for us and then two more in '24. So yes, we are not, by far not alone in this, and wastewater treatment plants are not even the only sector that are going to start monitoring for this.
Councilman Paulman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for bringing this to us. I know nationally, I think you spoke to inflow earlier, but I know nationally, on an industrial scale, the EPA mandates outflow monitoring as well. Do you foresee that outflow monitoring coming to our municipality within the next, say, inside of five years? I got you with a good one.
I think that's going to be political, so I don't even know how to guess. So originally, the MPCA, when they were starting to discuss this monitoring, they wanted our effluent or our outflow sampled also. We don't yet know, though, how, so this is going to get a little chemistry nerdy, we don't know how the precursors that are coming in from industries or household use are oxidized and changed into other PFOS chemicals. So first, we need to know what's coming into our treatment plant from our municipality and decide if it is a problem. I mean, we know it's ubiquitous, so PFOS, these 5,000 chemicals are literally everywhere. They're in industry everywhere, they're in so many of the products we use, so they're everywhere that waste is, so wastewater, compost, every, garbage, landfills, everything. But they change too, when they're exposed to different processes, so first, we need to know what we have in our city coming in, and then we can maybe identify the types of industries it might be coming from. So different industries will have different sort of fingerprints of these PFOS chemicals, and then we'll be able to work on source reduction, if and likely ours are at a level that we would like to reduce them. It is not as helpful right now to have effluent sampled, because again, the chemicals coming in change during our treatment process into other ones, so that would not be, right now with the data they have, as helpful to be able to look back at the sources. We would be a little more lost that way if we were only doing effluent monitoring. I do not think it's unlikely that effluent monitoring voluntarily, maybe in an MOU like this, could come around.
Okay, but not on the foreseeable future, not in the foreseeable future anyways?
Right.
Okay. Well, I channeled my inner. Well, I channeled my inner former council member Sean Mesky for that one, so I think he's going wild right now, but thanks.
Just no comments or questions. Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So it sounds like they want to help cities. After two years, then they'll say, oh, we're going to find you because you got...
That is not how I would describe it at this point. So this is sort of another one of those issues or regulations. It's not a regulation yet, but an issue that's coming down from the federal level, that's filtering down to states and then to us with NPDES permits. Right now, the Pollution Control Agency just wants to know what's out there, how much of it is coming to wastewater treatment plants, what types of industries it's more coming from, and then how effective can we be in our source reduction of it? Because there's no treatment for, there's by and large, no treatment for it. There's no treatment that's economically feasible. There's no treatment that we could put at the wastewater treatment plant to degrade these PFOS chemicals. So source reduction is going to be similar to other pollutants, especially in stormwater, is going to be where we target our efforts. So at this point, you could describe this state as potentially helping because they did find funding for the sampling, for at least the first two rounds of sampling. They are actively seeking funding for the next two rounds of sampling, which will happen in 2024. But again, sampling, one set of samples can be a couple thousand dollars, so.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Nelson.
This is a positive. I mean, it is a step for them to acknowledge that they're trying to help instead of punishing for the levels. They're trying to work to see what's causing the levels in.
Yeah, I would say they're definitely trying to be much more collaborative than some other permitting avenues and regulations have been. Right now, they really acknowledge that they don't know anything, that we don't know anything, and the chemical engineers barely know anything about these at this point. So they are kind of saying, let's all together sample this, figure out what it is, let's try to figure out again where it's coming from. PFOS is not listed on an ingredient label, so when you go to the store, there's a lot of chemicals, or there's a lot of products you're buying that have these chemicals in them, but you don't know that because it's not listed on an ingredient label. And even the ones that are saying like, oh, paraben free or something now, PFOS isn't really on there yet. PFOA is sometimes listed, like nonstick cookware is PFOA-free. That's one of 5,000 chemicals. Also, industries, these are not listed on their SDS sheets either, so for industries to say yes or no, it's hard for them to even always know without doing a lot of digging too. So I surely can't go to an industry and say, please tell me what you're using that has PFOS in it that we're receiving. They're going to say, it's not listed, and we must not be. So definitely, this state right now is trying to let us all gather as much data as we possibly can to try to investigate more.
Just no comments or questions. So seven or eight years ago, MPCA came out and gave us a 20-year window.
Compliance schedule.
Right? So this won't jeopardize that 20-year agreement, correct?
Absolutely not. This will not. That compliance schedule for all the salty parameters will remain intact, not affected by this.
And so I'm going to be gone here in a few months, and I'm sure all of the rest of you remember that agreement. So we have to make sure that the clock is ticking. I mean, at least seven years are gone on that. So I think we're about 14 years out on that, and I know I bring that up quite regularly. At the time that that was brought to us, that would have cost the city of Wilmer $20 million. It was surprising. It was 20 years and $20 million. And so we're at right now, you know, and I've talked to John Heron about this a lot because one of the things that we can do, and as a council, we may end up in the situation of mandating that there's no water softeners in Wilmer and that all of the water is treated before it gets to the house. That's one way to really drop a lot of that salty discharge down. And again, like I said, you know, I think it was seven years ago, but I'm not exactly sure when it was.
Yep.
That was a $20 million expense, and we just spent $85 million on the wastewater treatment plant. And so, you know, I mean, as a council, you need to keep that in mind as you continue moving things forward. You are going to have to deal with this because when this, when our grace period ends, we're going to have to pay the fiddler, one way or the other. And so just remember that that snowball is in front of you. So we have a motion that's made and seconded. Additional discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Plomman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmis.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Sarah, thank you for explaining something that we don't know much about.
You'll see more in public education that comes out, I promise. You'll know more than you ever wanted to.
I already do. Next, we have considered an adoption of the Unique Opportunities Final Platte. Mr. Walker.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So this was just a formality that was missed several months ago after it was approved by the Planning Commission and just needs to be approved by the council. So with that, if you have any questions, we will answer them.
Okay, so staff is looking for a adoption of the Unique Opportunities Final Platte.
So move.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion.
Different questions, not about the platte, but have they finished their traffic yet?
They have not, but the traffic study has been done. I guess it's currently under review from Bolton and Minkin, so we should be seeing that pretty shortly.
Additional comments or questions? Councilmember Nelson.
Just a clarification, so we're waiting on the traffic study, but what else has gone on or where there was a conditional use or something? So where are we at with the whole, where are we at with it?
Yeah, so once the traffic study is back, then once the findings come forth, whatever the findings are, they'll have to be complied to for the conditional use to be valid. So whatever is mandated by the traffic study will have to be followed for the conditional use permit to be, like I said, valid. So that's just where we're at now. So once those findings get back, like I said, should be shortly. So I don't, I guess, like, I imagine there'll probably be a presentation here, but I'm not sure. I imagine we'll just, we'll get that, so.
Additional comments or questions? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion does carry. Next, we have the consideration of an agreement with Hometown Fiber for telecom mapping. Mr. Walker.
Once again, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So this is, this is something that has come out of the broadband RFP selection committee, and so this is not the recommendation of the committee. This is, I guess this is not the sole recommendation of the committee. That was the primary purpose for us to decide which direction we were going to go. This was, this is something that will allow us to make a final determination of what our recommendation will be. And secondly, this is also just good information for myself to have as the Planning and Development Director about what utilities, as far as like internet capabilities are available on a parcel level, not just the census block level, which is currently available. And so just for the committee's purpose, we've just kind of been working through this, and we feel that in order for us to make an accurate decision, one with the weight and the gravity that we intend to recommend with, we would like to have all the information possible available to us. And so we feel that getting telecom mapping services done will allow us to do that. And then, I think, as it's stated in the car, since a big part of this will be mapping the airport facilities and then also the industrial park, it will come out of the industrial park fund. So if that is, any questions you guys have, be happy to answer them.
So staff is asking us to consider an agreement with Hometown Fiber for telecom mapping, and we also talked about this at our work session. Looking for a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Councilmember Nelson followed by Plomman.
Thank you. So if I heard you correctly, the recommendation is to pay for the entire amount out of the industrial park fund?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Plomman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's kind of an expensive map, but I think it's worth it. Do we have, I know we've heard before from our Economic Development Commission Director, Mr. Backman, kind of the importance of this, kind of how, along the same lines, how it related to, say, the shovel readiness of our industrial park expansion and how important that was. He preached that many years back. We followed his lead on that, and we saw great outcome. I mean, look at the development that's going on out there. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think similar can be said for something such as a study like this that gives us better knowledge and needs analysis for these types of services. Is that what we're going for here, is not just so we know, so to speak, but more like information that we can put to use and specifically when it comes to growth and development of the city, correct?
Certainly. So that way, when someone does purchase a site or say that they're willing to go into a building, that way they don't have like a six to eight month lag, and actually you won't have internet or you won't have sufficient internet until this date. That's something that we can have in like the preliminary site finding discussions.
All right. I'm supportive of the motion. Again, I'm supportive of the, you know, the studies, that's just the nature of studies like this. They're expensive, like I said. So, yeah, the cost is a little bit of, you know, makes your hair stand on end, but at the same time, what we've seen is the results of stuff like this and being prepared and being set up for that industrial growth and development pays dividends in the long run. So thank you for your work on it.
Yep. Additional comments or questions? Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So is this mapping of the entire community then to see where fiber optic?
Yeah, so this, yeah, yeah, yeah. So this will be mapping on every single parcel within the city of what internet facilities exist at that location.
Okay. So when they are working on or have worked on fiber already, don't they have to provide a map to the city so we know?
So, so there's two answers to that. So we do have record of excavation permits of what has been done, but excavation permits are just kind of tracked by like when you cross the right of way. And I guess like when you, direct quote from a meeting I had last week, opening up the ground right now, kind of looks like a spider web just with everything that's in the ground at the moment. But then also, like I said earlier, you can, all broadband utilities, like internet utilities that are in the ground, are available at the FCC level, and you can look at it on like a census block. The census block isn't necessarily helpful when you're looking at site-specific data. And so what this would achieve for us is site-specific data instead of at the census block level, because then we could still end up in a situation, well, your census block should be served by X, but then for whatever reason, if you're, if the line didn't make it to your block or the line didn't make it to your doorstep, then we would still be giving out false data, and then that would still cause the problems of I'm still six to eight months out from having internet. And so we'd like to just know.
All right. So like in the last month, I think, well, they used to be called Intel, but it's kinetic or something like that now? They've been doing something in town.
Lot of work.
But that's just for their own?
Yep, 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 yep. And so what they're doing right now is they're currently in the process of large-scale buildout, not full-scale buildout. I would say large-scale buildout, and right now they're putting in what would be the skeleton of that. And so, not to get too technical, but there's essentially like the big connection points, and like, so they're establishing the big connection points, and their plan would be next year to kind of put in like those smaller connection points that could go to the house. So right now, like that, that's where their work is consisting of.
Okay, so that's just their fiber optic. No one else can use it then?
Nope, that's theirs, yep. Just theirs.
So if you have a bunch of different companies coming into town, they all have to put separate fiber optic in the ground?
Yeah, and so I guess like you're kind of, you're starting to knock on the door of some other proposals that we received of kind of building like an entire network that multiple companies would be able to use, but right now it is that's like whatever you put in, you can use yourself unless you buy, unless you buy bandwidth or if you have like an agreement or partnership with somebody else.
Okay, thank you.
Additional comments or questions? Roll call.
Councilmember Plomman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmis.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Thank you for your report. Community pride announcements. We did receive a thank you letter, which is included in the packet, from the Kissimmee Utility Authority for when our municipal utilities folks went down and helped for the hurricane and the work that they did down there. So we had to receive that and wanted to make sure the council had, saw that as well. So council members, any council members have any community pride announcements?
I have one.
Councilmember O'Brien.
I know it's law enforcement's quote-unquote duty to protect and serve, but when you look what's going on and what are, how our officers responded on Saturday, I mean, I'd just like to take the time to thank the chief and his people for keeping most people safe, especially you guys, because I know that was a tricky situation, to say the least. Yep.
I don't know what you're talking about. So we had a tricky situation on Saturday?
Gunshots.
Yeah. Oh.
Couple of them.
Okay. Make sure and get out and vote. Tomorrow is election day, so make sure and get out and do your civic duty. As I heard one person say on the radio this morning when I was looking, listening to talk radio, it's your right to vote, and if you don't vote, you don't have a right to complain. I'm sure the complainers will still be there, but just putting it out there. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. adjourn.